Good morning. It's now about 9:01 a.m. I'd like to welcome everyone to our April 28, 2020. This morning, I've asked Eric to do our invocation and our pledge. If everyone please stand.
Our Father, who have come today to take all the wonderful blessings given to us, we pray that you'll be with those who are sick, those who are suffering, especially through this pandemic that has spread throughout the world. We pray that you will be with our leaders, pray that they will look you for guidance and make those decisions which will bring honor and glory to you. We pray that you be the commissioners today as they protect the business of the county, pray that they will make those decisions which will help the citizens there and always do what is best for us. Thank you, Father, for blessing us, be with our first responders, those in military, those who are serving abroad and here at home. Do your sense any prayer? My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda this morning is approval of minutes from our April 21, 2020, a special call meeting. Do I have any questions or comments, or do I have a motion to approve?
Please go for it.
Second.
I had a motion to approve by Commissioner Gamba, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving ahead to our consensus agenda, we have items two through seven. Any questions or comments on any items, or do I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Fleming, seconded by Commissioner Hale. Second comment by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, I will ask Mr. Kerry Walden if he'll give us an update that we're this morning. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, gentlemen. Briefly, I want to give you an update on where we are with our coronavirus nineteen for Swanee County. To date, we have tested 710 individuals, of which 582 are negative. Our current case count is up to 128. We will be announcing 10 new cases today. All of those 10 cases are results that we are seeing coming in from the mass testing at our long-term care facilities. And of that, six are residents, four are staff. We also will be announcing three additional deaths today. Unfortunately, we are currently at 11. We had three additional deaths. That will bring us up to a total of 14. The three additional deaths, as well as the other 11 deaths, were all connected with a long-term care facility. And all of those individuals were elderly with underlying medical conditions.
Let me, before you go any further, I'd just like to say, all from my condolences to Commissioner Fleming, one of those folks was his aunt. And it just shows you how close to home this is getting. Also, I've had a distant cousin that was, is another one of those deaths. So it's tough, it's tough what we're dealing with here. And I just, it, we don't just come in here and talk about it and take it lightly. I mean, it's, it's close to home, and that's a fact that everyone, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I just wanted to bring that out loud.
And Commissioner, our condolences as well. What we're seeing is because if someone is positive with COVID, it gets classified as a COVID death. COVID may not be the cause, but it is an accelerant. It can speed up if you have underlying medical conditions. We have seen that it can speed up your demise quicker than if you were not positive. So that's the hardest part of the job, is having to announce a death. As you recall, we went in last Tuesday to Swanee Healthcare and did mass testing. They tested 131 residents and staff. We are beginning to see over the weekend the results coming back in. And I'm happy to report that out of that 131, so far, we've seen 86 negative cases. And only 17 positive cases. And we're waiting on 28 results to come in. On Thursday, we had a team at Dossier Manor out of Advent Christian Village to do mass testing. They tested, and the reason we were there, as you all know, they have one employee that tested positive, and they've been isolated since April the 14th. We had a team in, they tested a total of 52, which included 31 residents and 21 staff. Those results are beginning to come in, started yesterday and last night. Of that, they've only had one positive case in a resident, and so far, 15 negatives. But all of the results have not come in yet. On Friday, we were at Good Samaritan doing the mass testing, where they tested 140 residents and 209 staff. If you recall, they had one staff that was positive, and they were isolated around the 15th of April, have not worked since then. But out of an abundance of precaution, we, you know, worked with the state to send in a team. And again, there was 349 total residents and staff that have been swabbed. We're waiting for those results to come in, and they should start filtering in either tonight or tomorrow. So we'll be reporting that information out as well. So I'm encouraged by the number of negatives that we're seeing, and we hope that that trend continues. The state is transitioning to how they release the data to one time a day, and they're usually putting that information out around 2:00. We still have the opportunity early in the morning to look through the data to make sure it's accurate. Once we have done that, I usually, if we have any cases to report, I usually give Mr. Harris a call just to make him aware. And then we put together a press release, and we forward that out to all the commissioners in the email address, as well as the Sheriff's Office and Emergency Management. Once we have contacted the commissioners and Sheriff's Office first, we then send that out to the media. I'm hoping, Randy, it gets where I don't have to call you as frequently.
I was excited last night when my phone didn't ring.
Yes, sir. There has been some discussion that has started this week at the state level about increasing community testing. I do not know what that looks like at this point, because it's extremely, conversation started yesterday afternoon. I think the governor is interested in increasing the number of folks being tested. However, we do not have guidance yet as if it's going to be everybody, only those that are symptomatic, only those that have come in close contact. So we're waiting for guidance, and we're having discussions internally at the Health Department. How would that look? What would we need to do? How do we need to stage this? So as I learn more about this, I will certainly keep you aware of it. But right now, it's just preliminary discussions, and I don't have a lot of details that I can share. Based upon our recoveries, they rate, they have not come out with a great mechanisms to do that. But we're tracking it internally and based upon an isolation period, and when somebody had onset of symptoms. And from our conversations with those individuals that are positive, we've had between 38 and 40 people that have recovered and been able to go back into the workforce. And so that's encouraging. The folks are now seeing that their symptoms have subsided, that they're well, and they're able to go back to work. Again, this virus is different in everybody. Some can recover as quickly as six or seven days. There are some that are still positive, and it's been, you know, 21 days out. So it's all based upon your own immune system and your makeup. But we are encouraged that we're seeing some recovery begin to take place. That's a brief update, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Richardson.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Walden, last week, you kind of briefly talked about it, but this, a number you had given last week about the potential recoveries, 30, that you were awaiting, awaiting. Out of that number, the 38 that you had talked about, how many of them were in that 30 range from last week that you were looking at this week being able to report as being tested and having negative?
That would be all-inclusive. It would be, if it was 30 last week, you know, eight to 10 additional folks. Because of the two to 14-day incubation period, most of these folks have been out for their 14 days, and those, that time is, again, not everybody, some can come back sooner. And there are some that are asymptomatic, that can go back to work if they follow the proper protocols and wear the appropriate PPP and the equipment and so forth. But that 38 is all-inclusive, so it would include last week's.
And are we any closer to seeing immunity testing for antibodies?
We have no direction from the state at this time on the rapid testing. Right now, the Department of Health is still doing the swabbing, and that is the most accurate to determine if someone is COVID positive. I do know that the governor has ordered a substantial amount of the rapid test, but we've not been given a directive of how that will be implemented.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Walden?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I would, what if the 30 that was tested, do they be retested over and over, or would they be, if they were likely, or would that just end it?
No, sir. We are not, there's two strategies that you can use on folks that are positive. One is a retest, which means you have to have two negative tests within 24-hour period. Or the CDC and the Department of Health has a non-test-based guideline, which means if you're positive, you can go three days without fever, without using fever-reducing drugs, and seven days since onset of symptoms. So basically, 10 days out, you have no symptoms, you know, you're basically okay to return to work. But we encourage anybody at any point that you become ill, please stay home, contact your primary care physician.
Thank you, Mr. Walden. We appreciate the update this morning.
Anything else, Chairman?
I think we're good.
All right, thank you.
If you need to take off and take care of business, you're more than welcome to.
We'll be sliding out here shortly. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to have the things that come up. I just wanted to give you the opportunity, if you had anything this morning. Welcome.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to offer my condolences for your loss.
Thank you so much.
We are truly heartbroken for everybody that has had losses at this time. Last week, I made mention of the PPE equipment, the personal protective equipment that our office has been handling. I went back and did an update. We have provided to nursing homes, assisted living facilities, hospitals, law enforcement, fire rescue, schools, and other departments to date. Over 16,000 surgical masks, over 3,095 masks, which are hard to come by, over 800 face shields or goggles, over 450 gowns, and those are also very rare, over 10 bottles of disinfectant, we've only received one case of that so far, over 30 gallons of hand sanitizer, 2,700 gloves, and 700 shoe covers. So that's, gives you an idea of the equipment that we've had come in. And a lot of times, the shipments will come in, they'll call us on a Sunday, say we're leaving Orlando. So even if we're not in the office, we'll meet them at the door and unload it and get it out as quickly as we get, we receive it. And our CERT team, I have to brag on them, our CERT team began coming into the EOC twice a week on March 18. They've cleaned, reorganized, they make phone calls to our stores, checking on the stock, also calling facilities to see what their needs are on the PPE equipment. They also recently assisted at the food drive. Next week, they're going to begin working on our shelter kits. We want to make sure that we're as prepared as we can be with our kits for not only hurricane season, but COVID. And after each day that they work, they complete ICS, an Incident Command 214. With that form, that provides documentation that they worked, the hours that they worked. And then we're able to claim those hours to be able to document that for declared events. So from March 18th to today, they've donated 264 hours, which totaled about $4,000 in donated hours. So I'm proud of our CERT team.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Any questions, comments from the Senate?
Again, I just want to say thank you. I know my wife, we've been in touch with her and her doctor's office, and they're very appreciative of what you guys do, and other offices in town as well.
Thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day. This time, Mr. Harris, you have some updates, comments?
Yes, sir.
Questions, all of them.
I've got lots of things. I'm going to try to keep it brief, though. One thing that I'd ask Mr. Chairman is, we had an additional item, just go ahead and take care of business on a fence that is a replacement fence for one of our road projects. We took care of a list of these at one time on a senate agenda back a month ago, but there was one additional one that we had to work the details out on. The dollar amount is $2,332.31. We are actually paying the owner an amount equal to the cost of replacing the fence. We've got that number from a fence company. The owner's name is Sullivan, and I'm asking for the board to approve this. We've already, like I said, approved the others previously.
You'd like to have that as part of the motion?
Yes, sir.
So, second. I have a motion by Commissioner Richardson, a second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Continue, Mr. Harris.
I may come back in a moment on a couple of things if I need to, but I wanted to mention to you that we have, I think, 10 employees now that were working, or that do work for the library, that had previously been notified that we're going to be furloughed, and I think we have 10 of them now back, at least 10 of them. Some are working on the census, others are working with invoicing and just other matters within the library. I just want to let you know that as well. There is one more thing, and I can't remember what it is right now. If it comes to me before we finish here, I'll let you know what it was. It escaped me at the moment. That's all I've got for now. Oh, no, I'm sorry. The big thing is, we should be having a phone call. Commissioner Hale just informed me. We had spoken to, we never got a response back from the governor's office on the letter that Mr. Chairman, you and I sent. So Senator Bradley agreed to help facilitate that communication to the governor's office, and I know Commissioner Hale had spoken to him. And then I had a conversation with him yesterday. And the plan right now, if all goes well, is to have a conference call today at 1:00 to discuss the concerns that we have in the community and what the state might be able to do to help facilitate our needs going forward. I will say that I'm surprised that we haven't heard anything yet from the state on what's going to occur Thursday or the end of this much month, because certainly, there's been a great deal of anticipation in the community, in all counties across the state, on what's going to occur as this executive order is supposed to wind down from the governor. So my hope is to learn something today about that in that conference call. And my speculation is that this board may need to have a special call meeting before the end of the week, depending on what we do here from the governor's office.
I would like to say, before you go too far with that, first of all, I want to thank Commissioner Hale for pushing forward and making some contact with some folks over there. That letter was sent out about 11, 12 days ago. And I hope at some point in time, the governor gets to watch this meeting back on video, because I'm disappointed, I'm disappointed in him, I'm disappointed in his staff. I didn't need a call from him. I didn't need him to come see me. He's got plenty of people working over there that can reach out to us and answer our letter that was overnighted to their desk. So he got the letter. And to say I'm mad is an understatement. We deserve better representation. Us as a county need to do better, and they need to do better at state level. There's people in this county looking at us every day for guidance and direction and wanting answers. And our hands are tied, because we, all we can do is ask. We can't tell anybody to do anything. So we ask, we put a letter together, and we ask for some assistance. He didn't need to call me or come see me. He needed to have one of his staff reach out to us and acknowledge that he got that letter. And I don't even care if he said he was too busy, and he had 100 other things, and we was 100, number 101 on that list. At least, he acknowledged that he got that letter. We have not got nothing. And I'm mad as hell. And the people in this county deserve to understand exactly what's going on with our leadership. We deserve better. Swanee County deserves better. And this board's going to fight every day to make that happen. I'm sorry, Mr. Harris.
And Mr. Chairman, I would just say, when we have that conversation today at 1:00, that message will be delivered.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say that I appreciate Senator Bradley taking this thing on. I mean, he's indicated that he's, he's got the ear of the governor, and that he's willing to be a facilitator in this regard, and I'm very thankful for that.
And Chuck Brandon. I will say, it wasn't one call, it wasn't two calls, it was multiple calls to get this lined up for today. So a lot of people have been helpful, even when some have not.
I really appreciate what you're doing. It's just a shame that we have to, we have to go to this extreme to try to get someone to acknowledge that we got a situation over here. The problem I got is they know we got a situation, because they've been talking about it for a month in the governor's press conferences, speaking about Swanee County. So we try to send out, reach out for some help and some guidance and some direction. Because when you're like us, I'm not a medical expert. I don't have the answers. But I am smart enough to know, if I don't have the answers, I go try to find them somewhere. I go try to ask a question and try to get some help. That's all, that's all it's about. But hopefully, today, that phone call will turn into something and positive, and, you know, I gotta, I gotta have confidence that I'll have. And I do appreciate it, and we'll move forward. I didn't mean to be disrespectful to anyone, but sometimes you got to say what's on your heart.
I agree. Mr. Chairman, I do have one other item I want to speak to the board about. I addressed some of this, I think it was in the last meeting, when the tornado came through, tore materials up all over the place, and we had to step in. I shared, I think maybe it was two weeks ago, I can't even remember now, we've had so many meetings lately. But in any event, I shared at the time that it's a little bit unique, and that typically, with a hurricane, we're under a declared local state of emergency. We have broad ability to do a number of things that we would not ordinarily be able to do, and the statute provides for that under that scenario. We are currently under a local state of emergency, just a different type. But we've had weather events that have impacted a particular area in the county that I became familiar with yesterday when I had a phone call. I'll just tell you that we've got a short road that is a private road, it is not a county-maintained road. It has a lot of oak trees that have been dropped onto that road, and there are a couple of widows that live on this road that don't have the ability to move these trees and get in and out of there. Under the local state of emergency, if we were under a hurricane order with local state of emergency, we would have the ability to go in and do whatever's necessary to help protect life and property. We know that rescue units can't go in there in the current state of affairs that exists on this short road. And I'm going to ask the board to consider declaring that an emergency, under this declared state of emergency, so that we can go in and move those trees. We're not going to haul them out of there, we just need to push them out of the way. There's sufficient room to push them out of the way and open that road back up, so that these elderly women have the ability to get in and out. If we were, if we were, if we were under the hurricane order, it would be without question that we could just go in and do that under the statute.
Mr. Chairman, if you could just.
Interject into any motion that may be made that we consider it, at this emergency time, a public purpose.
I'd like to take comment from the board on it. I know it's a gray area. I mean, it's, you know, obviously, we can't go on people's private property, but in times of what we have going on right here, that we are in, state of emergency, I.
Mr. Chairman, was it during the time of the storm?
It was just, I think it was last week.
Last week?
Tornado, when everybody was watching the Weather Channel all night. It really isn't great. It's very clear in the statutes that we have this authority under an emergency, under a declared local state of emergency. We've just got, it's just unique in that we are under a local state of emergency. It's just not the type that we would typically be under when we see this type of damage, that we have the authority to go in and remedy under a local state of emergency associated with a hurricane. So it's just a little bit unique, and it's because of that that I'm asking that it be declared a public purpose.
So just to be clear, you're just going to go in and just push the trees with a piece of equipment?
We're going to push the trees out of the way and just open the thing up.
I don't see a problem with it.
Mr. Chairman.
Sorry?
I was just going to say, I'm in support of that. I mean, it's not like we're going in there and clearing and hauling. I mean, if it's a way of for a rescue vehicle to get in there or a fire, I mean, I think it's reasonable to say it's needed.
Mr. Chairman, I will offer a motion that we declare it public purpose, and local state of emergency, go ahead and get it done.
Have a motion by Commissioner Richardson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Harris. Anything else?
No, sir.
I just have a question on that. Will that carry over to any other roads that we have problems with in this emergency, or do we need to address them one at a time?
I don't think you need to address them one at a time. It just needs to be recognized because of the, you know, the incident that did occur. And once you're under the LSE, then you can go ahead and proceed with this. There's plenty of.
That's what I wanted to double-check on, so moving forward, and that y'all can just take care of it.
And we will. We will. I didn't anticipate this the last time that we had discussed it. I guess it was two weeks ago when it came through town. But then it was just this last week when these other small tornadoes, whatever they were, touched down on the south end. That's actually where the one was that I had the conversation about yesterday on the phone.
I want to clarify if I was misleading or looked like I was against it. I want to be very clear that I'm in support of doing this. But with that being said, we get calls every day when we're not under a local state of emergency to grade a road that's on private property or to fix something, and I want the folks that watch this to understand it's because of this emergency, it's why we're able to do this.
We're not grading or maintaining. It's just to get them passable.
That's correct. Under the statute, we do not have broad authority to just go in and start maintaining anything for anyone. We have the ability to go in, though, and help or assist in protecting public health and property when necessary. And in this particular case, we know that rescue units cannot get in on that particular road if we had a call today. I actually sent someone out to take a look at this yesterday, and they told me that it would take most of a day to push this stuff out of the way.
Anything else, Mr. Harris?
No, sir.
Thank you for that. At this time, do I have anyone else, a department head or anyone from the audience that wishes to comment on the COVID-19? We have a couple of other things coming, but I just want, if there's anybody else who'd like to comment on that, since we've been talking about it. Seeing none, we will move forward to our, at this time, I'll ask Mr. Norris to come up, Mr. Jimmy Norris. He's got his update on the census, I believe.
Good morning, Commissioners, Chairman. Yep, we've been working hard. After the last meeting, I think there was some good conversation about some things we could do to help Swanee County and help work with our library staff. So we left the meeting, we immediately got with Ms. Betty, she's back here in the back, and she started reaching out to staff. And I think that last meeting was on Tuesday, so Wednesday and Thursday, she was able to reach out to her staff and. able to reach out to her staff. And we had ten people that, uh, were willing to sign up and to help us with the census. And, um, so we put together a program, orientation program that took place yesterday at the library. Uh, we, uh, I guess that meeting started at about nine o'clock and, um, it went to well after lunch. Uh, we, we kinda brought them up to speed rather quickly. Ms. Jennifer with the Census Bureau, uh, called in via, uh, over the computer and she helped us answer questions. And it was, it was a really good meeting. Uh, I was very surprised at the enthusiasm that, that was in the room of, of those, those folks willing to help us. Commissioner Stapleton, uh, dropped in to help us get the meeting kicked off and give him a little pep talk. And, uh, unbeknownst to all of us, he also showed back up about eleven thirty with lunch for everybody. So, um, we do appreciate him and, uh, I think he can speak to the fact that, that, uh, we were, we were pushing pretty hard and we got some good information out and that these people are ready to go to work. We know they are working because we've already received phone calls at my office saying someone has called me and said if I have questions, uh, to call this number. Cause what we did was we, we gave them the local number to my office if they had questions, if they felt more comfortable calling that number than the, you know, the national number going online. So, we, we've got a program in place, they're getting started going out. I think there's ninety pages in that phone book. So, uh, there's gonna be a lot of time and effort spent going through and calling everyone. And then we've got a phase two and three that we're gonna be working. We just wanted to get these guys moving as quickly as possible. So, now they're moving. Next week, we're gonna look at some other pieces that are gonna, as was mentioned by Mr. Harris, we're a little unsure what's gonna happen after this week. So, so once we kinda find out where we are, then that's gonna let us come up with a couple of different options on how we can work with businesses and restaurants and, and other things that are out there. So, and Commissioner, I know obviously you were there and felt the vibe in the room, so...
No, I would just like to say that, uh, Mr. Norris reached out to me the end of last week, asked me if I would stop by and, and speak to the folks and, uh, of course, I, I did. Uh, I was, I was really caught a little off guard. I mean, I went in that room and there was nothing but smiles. And I told him how grateful I was because the last month, we've seen nothing but doom and gloom. And those folks was, uh, they was energetic and, and involved and asking questions. And I was, uh, I was just really impressed. Uh, I think something good's gonna come out of it from, especially with our hands being tied, not being able to do anything. But, yeah, I, I left there, uh, positive.
We, we also really wanna thank Ms. Betty for, she set it all up, she had all of her tables spaced out and, and everything was just the way it needed to be. And, and the existing staff that was there, several of those sat in the, the, the actual orientation piece just to kinda get updated because they have been a partner all along. And they already had some sense of stuff there at the library. But this just kinda refreshed even the staff that was already there. So, uh, I was, um, I'm excited by it. I think it's a great opportunity. And like I say, we know it's already working because we've already received, before I left this morning, uh, we had already received a couple of phone calls from messages that were left yesterday. So, we were able to get it in place and those guys started working yesterday and they're, um, working every day on it.
I was, I was really, I'm really happy because, I mean, seven days turned around. We sent him with the project to get started and they got it kicked off and, uh, I mean, that's, that's what it's all about. That's how you get things done is don't just keep talking about it, let's do something.
Yep, they're moving, they're moving, and they're excited to be moving.
Right. Have any questions for Mr. Norris?
Mr. Chairman, I, um, how often do you get the, the data in on the percentages of, of folks that are, that are getting their census done?
I get an update daily.
Are we looking better than, than we were or are we still? I mean, obviously every day you get more and you look better, but, uh, I just wanna see if, if anything's we've done up to this point, other than, than what you're talking about now?
Yeah, we, we are at, as of yesterday, we were at forty-five point six. This time last week, we were about forty-four point five. We, we've gained about a point in a week. So, you're looking at those increases that I saw last week, there were some days that were point one percent, point two percent. I think we did have a point three in there, but then we had a zero also. For some reason, Fridays are always our best day. So far, tracking it, we get the most response on Friday. Um, I, I don't, I don't know why. But then typically, like the zero of, you know, was, I think that was maybe Saturday. But other counties, i- it's just not Swan because the other counties that we are in that seven county group that we receive the reporting on are the same way. The report I saw yesterday, um, I think we were point one yesterday and so were three other counties and there were a couple of zeros in there. So, yesterday, we were actually better than several counties. I will tell you this, that we were also at the, and I think Commissioner will, will speak to this, Commissioner Fleming, but we were at the food drive here last week and that turned out to be a little bit of work. Um, we, we showed up at eight o'clock and there were five or six off of our committee that were here and we helped bag food as well as hand it out and hand out the census You can typically see about two to three days later when you do something, because you can see a little bump. So, that point three followed, you know, about two days later, which was Friday, this event was on Wednesday, so we see that bump. So, typically, we can see that we've done something. So, even though it's minute, it is somewhat rewarding to know that, that you put all this effort in and you did, you did move the needle just a little bit.
One other question. I, uh, and the only reason I bring this up is because I, I requested a phone call back from doctor's office, uh, last week and, um, it came back up in my Windstream as spam and potential spam. So, my question is, is have you contacted Windstream about making sure that any of our numbers that they're calling from does not show back and show up on, in their system as spam? I mean, is there any way you can, you can reach out to them, Mr. Harris? Is there anything that we can do with Windstream to make sure that that? Because, I mean, when you get that potential spam, it doesn't matter what, what, uh...
So, you're saying the numbers from the library, if the, when the library calls, that you think you could come across as...
Well, I mean, the doctor's office called me, I, when they called me back, it showed up as potential spam. So, that's, and it doesn't show the phone number, uh, completely, it just simply says potential spam.
Is that a good doctor you're going to?
Well, it wasn't my doctor, it was, uh, my insurance.
Yeah, you know, I can certainly reach out to Ms. Betty. We could, fortunately, and that was another issue, fortunately, she had enough phone lines at our libraries too, because we, we, um, we wound up with three from Downey Park, three from Branford and four here in Live Oak and we had the lines to do that. But we can, we can look at those numbers and I can reach out to Windstream and just ask them, is there...
I don't know what the process is. They, they, they may do it off of reporting, uh, of people reporting them in. I don't, I don't know.
Uh, no, sir, we, we haven't had any complaints, man, I haven't thought about it.
I would think they're good numbers, then it's how you're already getting results, well, of, you know, help.
Right, right.
When, Mr. Chairman, when you get that report back, that data comes back into you, point three, whatever, does that show you how that was received? Was it mail, was it internet? Does it break it down that far for you?
It breaks it, no. It, it doesn't break that piece. Well, yes and no. I don't know about phone and I don't know about mail. They do track the, the internet piece, the computer piece going online and doing it. So, that percentage I can see from the previous day. Now, that percentage doesn't move a whole lot. We, we have been hovering around fifteen percent and in the last, I'm gonna say, two, two and a half weeks, we have bumped up to almost eighteen percent for the online piece. So, we are tracking it, but it doesn't break it down to the extent like the total participation where they tell me it was a point one increase from yesterday.
I got you.
So, but that, that piece is increasing a little bit.
Next week, should, next week...
I can't even remember who's that guy, where you're at.
Next week should give us a, a good number at the next...
Yeah, yeah.
As to if we made a little headway.
Right, yep, yep. Cause today, yesterday, obviously, um, we, we went through the orientation and then we also shot a, a PSA announcement, um, with the staff included, um, letting everyone know that we're working on this and, you know, just trying to get word out about the census. You guys will see that coming out in the next day or two. So, if you would, if everybody would, would grab that, we're gonna put, be putting it out through my office. And we need to, we need to share that information because that's gonna help. It's, what we try to do is identify this is local people, this is local faces, this is Swan County residents doing this. And so, we, we took a, a shot of every single person there participating and their picture's gonna pop up to help make this way more personal for us and for Swan County and to let the people know that these people stepped up to, to help us. So, um, but it is, it is, we should see, may, today would be the first full day on Tuesday, so maybe on Friday, we might see our first kind of effect of, of how this is going.
And, uh, I, I did go to the radio station yesterday after I went by there and just talked about it a little bit on the radio and we're gonna do some more. Maybe we can record an announcement to kinda play, we'll figure that out moving forward. Work with them, with Jimmy, uh, so we'll have something that's kinda letting folks know. I just, I didn't say a whole lot yesterday because I didn't have a lot of information. I didn't have Jimmy with me, but I just wanted the folks to know that people representing the county would be calling, asking if they needed any assistance. So, something like that moving forward as well.
Right, and I don't, Sheriff, um, I wanted to thank him and his staff too because he helped us put out a, an actual, um, announcement last week about the census and he mentioned in that, that we would be working locally with libraries and so he put that, he put that out as well. Ms. Betty?
Yes. Anything else for Mr. Norris? I'm, uh, we appreciate you this morning.
Appreciate you guys allowing us to do this because I think it's really gonna make a difference. And, uh, as you saw, th- those people were actually happy to see other people. I mean, they, I think they were excited to talk to somebody else other than whoever they lived with. So, it was a really good, good meeting, so...
Thanks so much.
Thank you guys.
Uh, Ms. Betty? Welcome this morning.
Just wanna, um, piggyback on, um, Jimmy for a few minutes. I do have a little bit of stats from yesterday, um, but I too wanna, uh, thank Jimmy and, uh, Commissioner Stapleton for coming over and talking to the staff and sort of getting us started on a good foot, so to speak, with regards to this. I just wanted to let you know that, um, yesterday after, um, the training and after lunch, the staff was able to, um, make three hundred phone calls. They did, there are different sections on the phone that, um, Jimmy provided for us and it sort of give information, um, about the calls. But briefly, what I did was to find out that they, they had contacted people and I guess about forty-one of them said that they had completed the paper, um, the, uh, paper census. Um, and they left a lot of messages. Uh, and also, um, it was my understanding that some people did want to give Jimmy a call to see, uh, you know, how legitimate it was. I think that with the, um, the videos that we did, we'll be mounting them and we'll be also, uh, linking into, hopefully the county's website will have it. Jimmy is a part of the county, so I'm sure...
Just, uh, to interrupt you just a second, just because I was trying to help Mr. Norris out, when I was in the class, right before I left, I said, I told him, I said, I, I just wanted to kinda, them to understand kinda how we deal with things is, you're gonna get hung up on, you're gonna get people that don't wanna talk to you, you're gonna get people that's rude. I said, but you gotta push forward and just realize that there's, you're gonna get people that needs help. And I said, now, if you get somebody that's irate or that you can't help and they got, they need more answers than what you can give them, I said, you give Mr. Norris his number. So, I got ten people working to get Mr. Norris calls. So, all irate ones is gonna call him if they got any questions.
Apparently, it's working. Uh, but before the meeting, I was glad you said that because before the meeting, I tried to prepare them, I'm like, I've done phones before, do expect hangups, but don't let that stop you. Um, but I just wanted to give a brief, um, summary of what we did yesterday afternoon and also just to let you know that, um, I did go through the process of selecting staff according to how many phone lines we would have and also to try and make sure that we had, uh, appropriate staff in each, uh, district or county or what have you, library. I say county because I'm trying to deal with three counties right now. Um, but we also have, just for your information, and I've been asked this by some of the other commissioners and that is in the other counties, we do have people that will also be assisting with phones, um, in their counties. I did share with you that Madison, uh, county was a part of their, their state plan, so, uh, they will, uh, be helping with, going quote, the tracing process. And, um, I did get a question with regards to privacy and confidentiality because of the health, uh, record kind of thing. And so, I let them know and I let you know that because the library staff follows under, um, privacy laws with the state of Florida, um, in our libraries, uh, we know and they know what the consequences would be for inappropriately sharing information. Um, so, they're helping with the health department in terms of doing some calls with regards to tracing, uh, as it relates to the virus. So, wanna thank Ms. Sharon, is she still here? We have a newsletter, um, and yesterday it went out to about four thousand people, but, um, that, I think it was Friday, Thursday or Friday, we sent it out to, um, our regular department people and right away, Ms. Sharon forwarded it to everybody on her email. So, thank you for that, it was a lot of people.
Thank you so much for your ladies' line.
No questions for me or any questions?
Chairman, you said you selected the employees that, like, based on positions, so we didn't, we weren't able to offer it to everybody that was, was laid off?
What I did was I selected, um, according to the number of lines that we would have. And then, and, and I took it a step further and I selected, uh, according to who I thought best would be able to handle it. And I'll explain that. Um, I have had some staff that just, uh, for whatever reason, their own, and I'm not judging, um, just was very uncomfortable being in the environment with other people. So, um, I handled that the best way that I could, but I thought that for this purpose and for what we're doing now and because of that past experience, I needed to make sure that I had, um, um, people that would be able to, um, take care of the task, uh, with as little fear as possible. This is why you pay me to be director.
I just, I wanted to know what the process was, I'm, I'm not questioning you on it.
All right. Um, so, did I answer?
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to say to Betty, thank you for putting the ten individuals back to work and ease some of the grief and pain out of them.
And that's ten in Swan County, I do need to, cause my other people look at these videos too. Um, but that's in Swan County and Madison and Hamilton County. Uh, some employees are also back to work, but for similar...
Thank you for, thank you for being a wonderful library director. I don't think we could have any better.
Now, you're making me glad.
Thank you so much.
Today, I'll take that, thank you.
All right. Have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll, uh, do we have any questions, comments from anyone in general public wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move ahead into, uh, closing comments. Mr. Prabhat, you have anything for us?
Nothing further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so much. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just, um, I know that you're aware and I'm just gonna mention this for the public's benefit, on the consent agenda, we went ahead and stated that your, what would be your regular board meetings for May fifth and May nineteenth are scheduled to be held here. Uh, we've been calling these and advertising... to be held here. Uh, we've been calling these and advertising these as special meetings, but your regular meetings are gonna be held here for that purpose for the next month. Hopefully, we'll know more. Hopefully, this virus will be gone by the end of next month. Um, but I just wanted to emphasize that for those that may be watching.
Thank you so much. Anything else?
No, sir.
Commissioner Richardson?
Nothing.
Commissioner Fleming?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman. I just wanna, I got a few thank yous. First of all, I wanna thank you for how you conduct your, your meeting again. You got to hold our public official accountability. And, uh, thank you for being cordial with doing that. Also, uh, last week, we had that farm share. Uh, it was a, uh, sizable event. Uh, out of that, there were nine hundred, eight hundred ninety-one automobiles that came through and two hundred turned away.
Wow.
Now, not to mention the ones that could not, you know, they probably saw the crowd and they probably said, I don't wanna get in that mess. But, um, I think it was something that was, something that was successful in Swanee County. And, um, is, uh, some individuals in here that, that, uh, I'm just proud and thankful, thank God for the ones that did what they did. Um, some are not here, but I'm gonna mention their names. And, uh, I see, I see the fire chief is, is back in the meeting morning. Good to see you again, Chief Crawford. Uh, see some more individuals. But the sheriff's department, the police department, uh, fire chief and, uh, rescue service, uh, Chief Hand and Adam, great job. Y'all staff did a great job. Uh, Mr. Norris, you and the economic development with those, uh, census cars that was given out, uh, great job. Commissioner Gamble, the volunteer that came and worked hard. And, uh, uh, city mayor, thank you, Mayor Davis, for the job well done. And the cert team. And to all the ones that, that, that I, maybe I didn't, I'm not calling names, but in order to, to make this a success, it was, uh, it took everybody. Uh, the, the city police department, when they came up, they were talking about the cars, uh, up at First Federal, uh, down on one thirty-six. There was a lot of people. And I saw tags from Georgia. Um, I, I guess some people just popped up from the interstate, uh, Texas and I think Louisiana. And I like, I know these people didn't come just, you know, but they were here. Uh, another job well done. I think, I think our, our board, our commissioners and Mr. Harris, things that you did, you let, you know, you know, let some of your workers came. And Harold, he came and worked hard. But I look at this again as a success, something that was needed to give back to the community. Uh, I had the opportunity to go on ninety-eight point seven, which is a gospel station, and we talked about it. Uh, the owner talk, called me and asked me questions. And I told Sheriff, we shared what it, what, what a farm share was about. Um, um, Ms. Davis, Ford, Ford Davis, she brought this idea. And I think it was very good for Swanee County. And again, I say thank you to Parks and Rec, Mr. Scott, work hard. Uh, I'm not a big pizza eater. But at that point, I think I needed some pizza. And thank you for that. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir. At this time, I'd like to ask Mayor Davis to come forward and close us in prayer just a moment while we're finishing up here. Uh, Commissioner Gamble, closing comments?
Um, all I think I have, I, I'm sure y'all may have got a copy of it, but it was a letter from Rob Bradley, our senator. I'm gonna read it real quick. Uh, "Dear Commissioner Gamble, we're facing unpredictable, uh, unpredictable challenge. The COVID nineteen virus is awful. This is taking a terrible toll on those directly affected and having a stunning impact on jobs and our economy. That being said, we will defeat this virus. I believe that our community and our state will snap back quickly and come back stronger. While I do not prescribe the doomsday scenario of many pundits, I do recognize the virus may have on the twenty-twenty-one state budget to mod- modestly alter it. That in mind, I wanna take, I wanna make you aware of specific projects in the state budget that may have a direct impact to your county. This will allow you to advocate for these projects through Governor DeSantis before he makes his veto decisions." There's about twenty-five million dollars worth of projects on this list divided up between the county and the school board. I forwarded a copy of this to the school board so that they would know. But while I don't know if today, and when y'all's phone calls are appropriate time to bring it up. But these projects, even though we are in a serious time with this, uh, virus, are vital to Swanee County and moving forward. Um, so while y'all have his ear, he may bend it a little bit on these projects.
We, um, I have spoken to him about that directly. Um, and we have, and we will continue to do so. We'll mention it again today.
And I'm, I'm, I'm sure y'all have all seen that. But I just wanted to make the public aware, anybody that wants to send emails, I mean, it's anything from fire department northbound, road improvements, uh, different programs through our school system. Uh, you know, our budget is, uh, based on projections. And I'm sure with this virus, everybody's projections are way off. The states I know are gonna be off. Sales tax, gas tax, everything's down. Uh, TDC tax, I mean, everything. So, they're gonna be making changes. I just, we're a small county and our little piece of the state budget is, is, is pennies compared to what they're gonna spend. And I just hope that he can find a cut somewhere else in not Swanee County. That's all.
And with that being said, he didn't, when I spoke to him necessarily say that we would be cut. But he did encourage us to send a letter to the governor, obviously to his office as well, uh, just in support of trying to keep all that we can.
Well, I mean, it's made it through the budget process. And the last thing we wanted to do is get cut by the veto again.
Which we still have a few days on that, not many, but.
Not many, but.
From, from what I understand, the governor hasn't even looked at the budget yet.
Well, maybe he won't in time.
I hope he doesn't. I hope it runs out.
Time, time will expire.
Yeah.
Time will expire and it'll just approve itself.
Right. And, uh, thank you, Commissioner Gamble. Commissioner Hale, any other closing comments?
Uh, no, just appreciating this community. Again, every one of you guys out there. And, uh, I'm sure like most of you guys, I receive phone calls daily of concerns of people ready to go back to work. And, uh, I don't know how you guys feel, but I'm ready to put them back to work as long as we can do it in a safe manner. And I know that we can. And our community will follow the rules. So, hopefully, uh, from what I understand, the governor's meeting with the White House now. Uh, just had a call while we're in here from Senator Bradley. So, I'll be calling him back soon as this meeting's over. And Mr. Harris and I have, hopefully, a wonderful conversation and come out with some good news this afternoon. So, just thank you, everybody. Thank my board. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hale? I'll just close this morning with just, uh, continued thoughts and prayers for this community and the loved ones that we continue to lose on a daily basis to a virus that we can't see. Uh, I've been closing with some sort of quote. Today, I've had, had something here that's, uh, that goes, "Before we act, our imaginations often run wild. But when we move forward, we often find the path ahead far less daunting than the horrified version we had created in our minds." The quote is, "We generate fears while we sit. We overcome them by taking action." So, just like to leave everybody with that today. We all get up and stay busy. Stay a lot more positive that way than sitting around and thinking about how the doom and gloom. Uh, I'll go ahead and have a motion to adjourn. Once we do that, we'll, I'd like to have a closing prayer. If everyone please stand. This time, do I have a motion?
So, move.
Motion. Sorry, sir. I got a motion by Commissioner Gamble, second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Good morning. Thank you again, Ms. Chairman. Uh, I wanted to say this, if it's okay, before the prayer. I was going through some old, uh, files I had up in my, in the church attic, looking for something for someone. And I happened on a nineteen eighty-five report to the citizens of Swanee County that Jerry Scarborough and I had done when I was county coordinator. Uh, Mr. Harris, our budget was just under six million dollars. The population, I think, was in about the twenty-five thousand range and something like that. Uh, some of the highlights, uh, we had just gotten approved for ALS, for our emergency management service. Uh, we were extending the runway. And we had some, uh, roads we were resurfacing and, uh, we shaved those. And if any of y'all are interested, I'd like to send you a copy of that. I think you might find it interesting. But just wanted to share that with you while you were all here. Let's focus on this morning, uh, those who, uh, are still in harm's way and our healthcare workers. And then for this reopening, I'm, I'm hoping we'll be able to do that and, and everyone will be safe. So, let us pray. Father, thank you today for your goodness and mercies. Again, we thank you that your hand is upon us and upon our county and our communities here. Thank you for our leadership. Uh, thank you for these, uh, men and women here who lead us every day and, uh, have made, uh, some tough decisions. Thank you, Father, for those who are serving on the front lines, those who give of themselves every day and serve their fellow man to bring a relief to their suffering and sickness. We pray that you would protect them and their families, keep them safe. And, Lord, especially those who are sick, who have symptoms, those who are, are in, in, uh, the throes of this pandemic, we pray your hand upon them and we pray your healing speedily. Those who have lost loved ones, we ask their comfort, uh, Lord, and your encouragement to them. We thank you, Father, for our great land, our great country. We pray, uh, for our state as we look toward reopening. We pray that our citizens would be safe. And Father, we pray for these, uh, men and women and families who own businesses, those who work, those who need to work. They need to make, uh, income to provide for their families. We pray that you would help us and keep your hand upon our economy and keep us strong and keep us free and protect us from our enemies without and within. We pray in your wonderful name. Amen.